No.
It is now.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Perhaps let's get underway. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee meeting for February 18, 2025. First order of business is to approve minutes from December 16, 2024 meeting. There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in a second and any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the ayes have it. Okay, so then we have a series of ordinances tonight. And together they are the city's annual batch of financials, or actually, excuse me, debt financing so that we can pay for capital projects. And rather than getting into the details of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine ordinances, why don't we start with an overview of our financial strategy for financing with our finance director and her team. Also want to acknowledge we have Public Works here, I think to talk about leasing, is that correct?
Sure.
Yes, okay, so at the request of the finance director, let's start over on this side of the room, and I'm sorry to make you wait, but this is must-see TV anyway, so you'll be highly entertained. And in all seriousness, it's our annual opportunity to hear our updated financial strategy, the outlook for the year, get a recap on the debt that we have on the books already, the debt that we contemplate engaging in in the months and year ahead. So it's a important discussion. So Director Mahoney.
Yeah, sure, thank you. And so I'd like to introduce, for those of you who don't know them, but they've been around for a while, Jeff Rink from KeyBank and Catherine Swartz from Booker Grayden. Catherine is our bond counsel and Jeff is our banker. So I will let them explain, they can explain things much better than I can.
Welcome both, to both of you Catherine and Jeff, and they have been with us for some time, Councilman Marks will remember for sure, and have been doing a great job these many years, so welcome.
And sorry, I apologize, I did not know I was supposed to send the PowerPoint to Maureen, so I just emailed her, I don't know, you all have paper copies, do you want it displayed on the screen as well, or is...
If we can, I think, well, I don't know if it shows up on the record of the meeting, but I think for the benefit of everybody, sure. But thank you for providing also this print copy that we can take with us.
Sorry, Maureen.
So, but go ahead and we'll, we'll get the audio visuals caught up.
Great, well, thank you, wonderful to see everyone. My name's Jeff Rink, Managing Director at KeyBank Capital Markets, and joined by Catherine Swartz as the city's bond counsel from Booker Grayden. And it's truly a pleasure to be here, we look forward to being able to have this kind of dialogue every year. A lot of work throughout the whole year happens in conversations, discussions, right, outside of this with staff and sort of the overall financial planning for every year's sort of batch of capital improvements, right? And as we'll walk through this presentation, Catherine and I will tag-team this, but as always has been in the past, interrupt us and let's, you know, we'll stop for questions as you have them, or if there is something you hear that you want more detail on, by all means, just let us know and we can, we can dig into whatever you may, whatever you may want to. As we look to start the presentation, I'll start with the standpoint of, I think you're all aware, and certainly for those of you that have some history with the city, the city is rated AA II by Moody's, right? And we'll have some slides to talk about that. That is an excellent, excellent credit rating. If you think about it, at a AA II level, there's a AA I and there's AAA, and that's it, there's only two rating categories higher than where the city is rated currently, and there's seven below you, right? You can fall into the single A category, and then even the, in Moody's standpoint, B double A, right? So, and we'll, we'll show you a slide on that. So we'll also show you too that the city has maintained that AA II rating for quite some time now, right? So, and I think that's a function of not just sort of the diversity and economic situation of the city, it's also the financial management of the city, and that includes a role for council too. When we have discussions with Moody's, there are questions and they want to understand council's role for financial oversight, right? So these kinds of discussions are certainly critical for, I know you to do your job, right? But it's also helpful in the overall sort of financial control system for how the credit rating agencies evaluate you. So this is a good thing, I think, on a lot of fronts. Since we are good with the presentation on the screen, so thank you, appreciate that. We always lay out initially the first couple of slides, we won't go through every deal, but it's the full city's debt picture. So the first two slides, and I know it's a little bit small, especially now as I've gotten older over the years, but it has every, every debt issue that's on the books for the city of Lakewood at the moment, right? And they go back now about 10 years. The city had, had debt issued prior to 10 years ago, but that has either been fully paid off and matured, or it's been refinanced, right? When, when we've been able to refinance debt. The next opportunity to refund some of the city's existing debt for potential savings if the market is good would be at some point in 2026, that's when the oldest bond issue in 2016 would be eligible to be refinanced. So that'll just be a function of market conditions and discussions at some, at some point next year. But...
Well, she told me. I think that's what happened. I think it was just... I don't know. So like, I guess I'm... It's more like, it's more like... I don't know. 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 So thank you, and thank you. I don't know. 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 I don't know.
Good evening, everyone. Perhaps let's get underway. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee meeting for February 18, 2025. First order of business is to approve minutes from December 16, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in a second, and any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the ayes have it. Okay, so then we have a series of ordinances tonight, and together they are the city's annual batch of financials, or actually, excuse me, debt financing so that we can pay for capital projects. And rather than getting into the details of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine ordinances, why don't we start with an overview of our financial strategy for financing with our finance director and her team? Also want to acknowledge we have Public Works here, I think to talk about leasing, is that correct?
Sure.
Yes, okay, so at the request of the finance director, let's start over on this side of the room, and I'm sorry to make you wait, but this is must-see TV anyway, so you'll, you'll be highly entertained. And in all seriousness, it's our annual opportunity to hear our updated financial strategy, the outlook for the year, get a recap on the debt that we have on the books already, the debt that we contemplate engaging in in the month and year ahead. So it's, it's a important discussion. So Director Mahoney.
Yeah, sure, thank you, and so I'd like to introduce, for those of you who don't know them, but they've been around for a while, Jeff Rink from KeyBank and Catherine Swartz from Booker Grayden. Catherine is our bond counsel and Jeff is our banker. So I will let them explain, they can explain things much better than I can.
Welcome both, to both of you Catherine and Jeff, and they, they have been with us for some time, Councilman Marks will remember for sure, and have been doing a great job these many years, so welcome.
And sorry, I apologize, I did not know I was supposed to send the PowerPoint to Maureen, so I just emailed her, I don't know, you all have paper copies, do you want it displayed on the screen as well, or is...
If we can, I think, well, I don't know if it shows up on the record of the meeting, but I think for the benefit of everybody, sure. But thank you for providing also this print copy that we can take with us.
Sorry, Maureen.
So, but go ahead and we'll, we'll get the audio visuals caught up.
Great, well, thank you, wonderful to see everyone. My name's Jeff Rink, Managing Director at KeyBank Capital Markets, and joined by Catherine Swartz as the city's bond counsel from Booker Grayden. And it's, it's truly a pleasure to be here, we look forward to being able to have this kind of dialogue every year. A lot of work throughout the whole year happens in conversations, discussions, right, outside of this with staff and sort of the overall financial planning for, for every year's sort of batch of, of capital improvements, right? And as, as we'll walk through this presentation, Catherine and I will, will tag-team this, but, but as always has been in the past, interrupt us and let's, you know, we'll stop with, for questions as you have them, or if there is something you hear that you want more detail on, by all means, just let us know and, and we can, we can dig into whatever you may, whatever you may want to. As we look to, to start the presentation, I'll, I'll start with the standpoint of, I, I think you're all aware, and certainly for, for those of you that have some history with the city, the city is rated AA II by Moody's, right? And we'll, we'll have some slides to talk about that. That is an excellent, excellent credit rating. If you think about it, at a AA II level, there's a AA I and there's AAA, and that's it, there's only two rating categories higher than where the city is rated currently, and there's seven below you, right? You can fall into the single A category, and then even the, in Moody's standpoint, B double A, right? So, and we'll, we'll show you a slide on that. So we'll also show you too that the city has maintained that, that AA II rating for quite some time now, right? So, and I think that's a function of not just sort of the diversity and economic situation of the city, it's also the financial management of the city, and that includes a role for council too. When, when we have discussions with Moody's, there are questions and they want to understand council's role for financial oversight, right? So these kinds of discussions are certainly critical for, I know you to do your job, right? But it's also helpful in the overall sort of financial control system for, for how the credit rating agencies evaluate you. So this is a good thing, I think, on a lot of fronts. Since we are good with the presentation on the screen, so thank you, appreciate that. We always lay out initially the first couple of slides, we won't go through every deal, but it's the full city's debt picture. So the first two slides, and I know it's a little bit small, especially now as I've gotten older over the years, but it has every, every debt issue that's on the books for the city of Lakewood at the moment, right? And they go back now about 10 years. The city had, had debt issued prior to 10 years ago, but that has either been fully paid off and matured, or it's been refinanced, right? When, when we've been able to refinance debt. The next opportunity to refund some of the city's existing debt for potential savings if the market is good would be at some point in 2026, that's when the, the oldest bond issue in 2016 would be eligible to be refinanced. So that'll just be a function of market conditions and discussions at some, at some point next year. But, but everything is layered into here, including the city's annual debt burden, and you'll be able to notice on page six, on the last page of the debt profile, that over the next several years, and especially as we get towards 2029, the city's debt burden starts to, you know, to reduce on an annual basis. I, I know we talk about this a lot, and we have some slides in here to address this, but what is really important, I think, to keep in mind when it comes to debt, especially specific to the city of Lakewood, like it's, debt is different for every city in terms of Catherine's going to walk you through like what overall debt limitations are for Ohio municipalities, but every city is different, and what's more important, we believe, than the debt, the statutory debt limitations, what's more important is to identify the cash flows that are going to pay your debt, right? Because you can have all the capacity in the world, but if you're having to use operational funds to pay your debt, which some cities have to do that, you're, then you're in a drastically different situation than a city like Lakewood, who has had incredible planning and foresight to set aside property tax millage that can only be used for capital debt service, and water sewer funds that are in very good financial shape to be able to pay your debt service. So we'll, we'll talk about the debt limits first, but then we'll talk what I think is more meaningful about the city's payment sources for each project that we have here. And it, it's critical to know, and the rating agencies value this tremendously, every project that you fund, and really for, you know, the last umpteen years that we have these capital improvements to be funded, every project is funded from a revenue source dedicated for that project that is not a general operational eligible revenue source. So you're not having to make a policy decision, which is really, I think beneficial, you're not having to make a policy decision that if we fund this road resurfacing or this water sewer improvement, we're going to do it at the expense of one of our housing programs, right? Or one of our, you know, one, one of our just operational type expenses, right? You have dedicated revenue sources, and so the trick is to make sure that we're sort of planning for as, as debt service gets paid on your other bonds, that that capacity is then used to be paid for these new projects that are coming online. Because Lakewood, as, as every, either northeast or midwestern sort of northern city, right, that, that has, is of some age, has, has valid and important capital improvements, right? That you have to keep up with, right? So you've done a wonderful job as a city, as a mayor, as a finance department, as a city council, for balancing all of your capital needs with responsibly spending within your means. So every project on here has a dedicated revenue source, that's probably the most important takeaway, I would say, that is not a general fund detriment, right? Where you have to make a choice on that.
Mr. Rink, quick interjection, one comment, one question. I recall, actually to Director Mahoney, you and your team, there used to be a chart, and Keith in particular may remember this from a former director, finance director, that had a visual of what Jeff just described, where the different incomes and the, and the outflows, and it showed arrows connecting the millage to the debt service, which meant the capital project. I think it might be helpful, and Maureen, the council clerk may remember this too, if we had it as a visual, for those of us who are visual learners, that, that might be a useful macro picture of, of the different funding categories and buckets of money and how we structure it to, to anchor the point that Mr. Rink just made. Quick question, 25 years seems to be the length of the bond. the length of the bonds. Could it be 10? Could it be longer? Why 25? Is that just a nice round number?
Yeah, no, there, well, I think it's a combination of two things. And Catherine could comment, too. One, you can never finance an improvement or an asset longer than the statutory useful life of that asset, right? So, so you always sort of start from there. We always look to Catherine right away, just to say, sort of what, 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 where do we have to play with? And then at that point, it's really a function of, if we move it all up and do it within 10 years, that's a lot of debt service, right, to cram in in 10 years versus spreading it out. I would say if, if Lakewood was a city that you knew, and unfortunately, it's not, like most cities, where, all right, this is our last year of capital improvements, then we have 10 years off, and we don't have to do anymore, right? Then it might make some sense, let's, let's shorten that maturity, right? But trying to keep within, we start with the useful life, and then we try to then keep it within the confines of the known revenue sources that are going to be available for us every year going forward, and fitting in, knowing that we have, as the Finance Department projects future capital improvements, knowing that we're going to have some amount of capital improvement debt every year. And, and so we need to spread it out over that 25-year period so that we can afford to pay it from non-general fund.
Thanks, that's a good reminder. That's in, I think, our finance policies and procedures that in general, we, we attempt to match the financial turn, length with the useful life of the equipment. Now, some equipment might be shorter than that. In this case, we're talking capital, I guess it's roads and buildings and structures and things that, that are close to 25 years. I suppose it's different when we're talking about leasing, which might be more 10 years, but, but anyway, okay, thanks for the refresher of the memory.
Yep, yep.
So each of these projects that we have, you know, the, we have six new projects, and last year we had four projects. And each of those projects, we go through and, and identify what the useful life of that project is. And then you do a weighted average maturity based on how much is being issued for which amount. And then I get a maximum. That's, that's my job, is it, you can't go beyond the maximum. But obviously, if you run it shorter, you pay less interest. So then there's a balancing when we go to bonds. At this point, we're just going, we're at notes. So we just assign what the maximum maturity of the bonds is if we were to go there. And then we make the decision later.
So I'm going to turn it over to Catherine, just to talk, oh, sorry.
Yeah, and I, I think I know the answer to this, but I think it'd be beneficial for everyone listening, because you switch between bonds and notes. Can you explain the difference between those and how they affect what we're doing?
So bonds are bond anticipation notes, is what we, what they are. It's a one-year borrowing. These will be due within one year of when we issue them. And we can roll them over. We have a five-year period where we don't even have to take off years off of the, the total maximum maturity. You kind of get this five-year grace period. We are definitely in that five-year period, because the notes that we are issuing were brand-new. They were new money last year in 2024. Sometimes we have a laundry list. Some projects started several years ago, some, you know, we add new money each year. These were all clean and new back in 2020, 2024, sorry. And so we're just rolling them over this year. We're not doing a long-term bond issue, which will set the rates going out for 20, 25, 30 years.
Right. So notes are short-term, bonds are longer-term. Usually the notes you do initially, you don't have to, but usually most cities will until the project's completed. So if there's any cost overruns or cost reductions, you haven't overly borrowed and locked in long-term rates, because you, you haven't finished the project. So practice usually is you'll issue notes. And then when the projects are done, and you can group enough of them together of some size, then you would take it out with longer-term bonds. Yep, great point.
So the best of the bank is bond anticipation notes, short-term?
Yep. Into bonds, correct.
And we did bonds last year. And then we took all the bond anticipation notes that had been outstanding, and we rolled them into bonds.
That's right. Yep, from 2024, right. That's exactly right. Yep.
Council members, see that we're on page six, and on the left, there's two, two columns with 2024. The one on the left is longer-term debt that probably predated 2024, and then new notes, excuse me, new, yeah, new notes, we're in the middle column, right?
Yep. So the, the notes in the bonds, those were all, those had been previously issued bands, bond anticipation notes. We rolled, you know, some of them had projects from, say, 21, 22, 23. And then we rolled them all into this bond issue. And then separately, a few weeks later, we did this new money note issue. And we strategically issued the bands in April. So we, previously, our bands had been in April. Every year, we lose a couple of days, because we like to, we like to close and mature, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We try and, you know, have, they, we want them to close on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and mature on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So we lose a couple of days each year, and we were getting closer and closer to the beginning of the year, which was causing a problem with our budget. So we, we bought ourselves a whole month, and we closed these in, on April 15th.
Any questions from council? I mean, the, the bottom line is that there's science and an art that goes into this. We have a team that's paying close attention and putting thought into, you know, allowing, allowing the expenditures that we're building projects with to come together, finalize before locking in a long-term interest rate. So that, that's the use of the short term. But then when we're ready, we'll time the market to the greatest extent possible and accrue savings for the taxpayer. So we have basically last year's 2024 spending in that middle column is not yet locked in on the long term. And we may not do that. Well, actually, I think you might have spoken to that, Catherine, but I missed it. We're, what are we thinking of doing with those notes?
So in 2026, Jeff indicated that will be the first opportunity to refinance the 2016s. We don't know yet if that will, if that will make financial sense, if you'll, if you'll have savings if you do that. But typically, we also don't go to bonds every year. We, we go a couple of years. We did bonds last year. We weren't even thinking about doing bonds this year. Probably starting late fall, we'll start looking at it. And if it looks like an opportunity for savings, we may do a bond issue next year. And then we will probably lump in whichever of the projects that were in the 24 or 25 notes that are completed.
Okay. So in other words, on page five, the first column, could next year be grouped together with the middle column on page six, if that makes financial sense? And there would be advantages for, you know, larger refinance, gets you better rates, that kind of thing, right?
You can, into one issue, you could do the refinancing and the note rollover all at once.
And alternatively, we might, we might punt to 2027 if 2026 is not favorable.
Yes, or is it?
Right. That's true. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
No, no, that's good.
Going into the details here. So any other points or questions you want to get into, council members? Okay.
It's actually December 1 is the...
Right, December 1, right? Right, right. Okay, you want to talk a little bit about...
So we're moving to, everyone's favorite topic is debt limits. And we do, this is overly exciting, I, I realize it, but this is really important to, to look at every year. And debt is highly regulated by state statute. Everything that we do, the pieces in the, in the ordinances, there are many, you know, checkboxes, all things that we need for state law, that are also needed for me to give my opinion. But the first one that we look at is debt limits. You know, does the city have the debt limits in order to, to issue the amount that they want to issue? And so there are two, there are two debt limits that we look at. We call them the direct debt limit. That one's really easy to calculate. It's a straight, straight calculation. And then there's indirect, which is somewhat more complicated. And so the direct debt limit, basically, you can borrow five and a half percent of your AV on an unvoted tax basis. All of the debt of the city of Lakewood is unvoted. If you happen to have voted debt, you have a higher, you could go up to 10 and a half percent. So we're just, the, the key here is we, we don't have to focus too much on this, because what you're looking at is non-exempt, what you're looking at is the non-exempt debt. And since 20, the bond issue in 2021, we have put in what we call an income tax pledge, which basically says that if needed, you know, the, the city pledges income tax to pay this back. And what that does, what that does is that it makes your debt that you've issued since 2021 exempt. So this limit is not something that is overly limiting anymore, because the, the debt from 20, you know, the bond issues are all exempt. The non-exempt debt is that 15 million. That is the non-exempt portion, that's not your water, not your sewer, from your 16, 17, and 19 bond issues. So that number is going to continue to go down, and it's not something we need to focus on very much, which is, which is good news. Still need to look? Go ahead.
Can you describe that? Because I understand, most time when you issue debt, you want to have a revenue source connected to it, like sewer to pay sewer, sewer fees to pay sewer projects. Could you explain the decision in 2020 to pledge income tax, which is our biggest source of revenue?
Is your biggest, I mean, and you're pledging it. You're not necess, you, the city goes through and they identify revenue sources whenever they're issuing debt, even for their roads, and then, you know, the portions that don't have the dedicated sources. But the reason that we do it, and we generally recommend, we generally do it with all of our cities, is so you don't get to a point where this is causing you an issue, where you're going to have to go and, and do a lease rather than a, a bond issue because of this limit. If you have another source of funds, and you feel like there's not going to be an issue with repaying, that is the limit, rather than this state-determined limit that's out there, which can just be considered restrictive. So it's just a, it's just a pledge. And it, it's the pledge that you need to make it so that it's, it's considered exempt debt. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. It's just, I, I was curious as to the reason. Because I mean, the, the pledge, meaning that if the bondholders come, if there is a default event, they're coming after the, you're right, the income tax revenue, as opposed just to the revenue source that's, that's pledged for the bond.
Well, I mean, the, these are general obligation bonds, though. I mean, these are, you know, it's not that the bondholders are coming after, you know...
But that's the securitization, where there's a revenue source, right? So that, that's where...
They still remain general obligation with the general obligation taxing authority to potentially raise.
Then what's the distinction of adding the income tax pledge?
It, it, it leads it to it being, it's like an extra, it leads to, it, it basically, it checks a box, box under state law, is kind of what it does. Just like the, the water and sewer. It's another source, so that it, you know, they have a list of this is exempt debt, and this is what you need to do to make it exempt debt.
And then I would just add, too, it's, it's also helpful to get the cheapest debt possible, right?
Interest rates go down, yeah.
That's right. So the more you have pledged to it, the better credit, and the better, and the lower interest rate, to your point, right? So that's really the point of doing it also, even though you're never going to need to use those revenues, right, to pay the debt. The pay, the debt will be paid with these specific targeted revenue sources that we're, you know, going to show you, and has been used in the past. But if we only pledge those targeted revenues, the interest rates on the debt would be higher. So most cities will do an income tax pledge and/or a GO pledge, not just for debt limits purposes, but also for making sure that they can get the lowest borrowing cost, knowing you're not going to have to use that revenue, and, and you have your dedicated sources. So it's really about just trying to keep your interest rates as low as possible.
Thank you.
So the other debt limit that we're going to talk about is the indirect debt limit, which is much more complicated, and looks to any piece of property in the city of Lakewood having more than 10 mils levied upon it. It's a complicated calculation, because you have to look not only at what millage the city of Lakewood has outstanding, but also all of the overlapping entities, like the county and sometimes the school district. There's a number of overlappers, and you have to look at, at what is available. And this became an issue back in 2016, 17, after the, or 16, 16 bond issue. In 2017, we were really up close to our limits. You see here, right now, the city of Lakewood Millage is 6.2. This is what it's going to be, what we're estimating it's going to be after we issue the 2025 bands, is 6.2. Back in 2017, it was like 9.3, 9.5. It was getting really close to 10 mils. And that was because you had a much lower AV at the time, your assessed valuation was much lower. So the, the room was much smaller. And what we elected to do for a couple of years, as you may recall, is we issued income tax revenue bands. Our bands were not GO, because we wanted to keep our bond issues, we wanted to make sure we had capacity for all of our bond issues to be general obligation. And the difference in the cost of borrowing for an income tax revenue note versus a GO note was very small. And so we decided to keep all of our short-term borrowing in, in income tax revenue. And then after a couple of years, your AV increased, and it was no longer an issue. Right now, you can see that after, you know, this, this all depends on how, it's much more confusing to calculate, and it depends not only just what your power amount is, but how long you go out. You're looking at the, the estimated year with the most principal and interest is how you, you back into this number. We're estimating approximately $91 million is what you could borrow after you finish this, after you issue the bonds, the bands this year. This will change every year, as your AV changes, as your overlappers change. Also, every year, you drop, you drop some debt. So some of your debt is coming off, and that changes what your highest year is. So there's, there are things that, that flow with this, but every year, we like to look at this, say you've got room, you know, again, from a state perspective. We want to look at the state perspective, and then, you know, make sure that there are no issues.
Thank you. So this chart on page 10, so the 187 million is the total debt we'd be able to issue. And then, so would you, is it the 187 minus the chart on page six, the 89 million? Is that how you come up with the number of 91 million? I'm just trying to...
So I think what this means is that you, your debt outstanding is, let me see if I can, I didn't bring my, my glasses. You currently have approximately, what is this? Is this?
Oh, sorry.
What is that? Eighty?
Eighty-nine million.
You currently have 89 million outstanding, plus the 32 million that you're issuing. So I think what you have to do is take out, take out, well, it, it's not a straight calculation either, I think, is the way that you have to look at it, is it depends if you have an 18-year, a certain power amount that goes out. 18 years is going to have a very different calculation. So I think this is the total debt you're able to issue based on the years assumed, which is 34. And then within that, they're looking at the, but your debt is not all 34 years. It's different amounts. So there, these are just assumptions. But this is taking what you actually have, and the additional debt that you could issue on a 34-year life.
It, it looks like the debt is going to be 6%, whereas last year was 5% or 4.1 on the short-term notes?
So what it doesn't even, it, for the short-term note, the estimate, it actually doesn't even matter what the final interest rate is, because in the legislation, we have estimated bond terms. So what we're doing is that we're not just putting in the information for, for this bond anticipation note, because this bond anticipation note is going to have 32 million in power amount due next year, which isn't right. That would skew everything. So what you have to do is, is make it, do a calculation as if it was a bond issue with your estimated bond terms, which I think are 6%, going out for 34 years. So then you do an amortization schedule, and you add it into the amortization schedule of your overall debt. And then you come up with the, the year where you have the highest debt service, which is usually in the next couple of years. It's in like 2026, I think, going forward. So then you take what your principal and interest is in that year, and that's what you use to filter back into the calculation.
The 6% rate, though, I'll say, is, is, is far, far on the high side, right? If Lakewood were to, if Lakewood were to borrow 34 years with your credit rating, that 6% would be more in, in somewhere in the fours, not, not anywhere near the six.
And we always plug in a very conservative estimate, because what you're doing with this legislation is that your, your estimate, you're putting in maximums, and you're directing certain decisions back to the Director of Finance and, and others, so that we can complete the transaction without having to come back to you. So if we put in 4.5, and then the day you went to market, it came out 4.6, we... So if we put in 4.5 and then the day you went to market, it came out 4.6, we couldn't complete the sale until you, we came back to you and had you authorize it. And that's just a disaster that we know, that the market can't handle. We're having to sign agreements on the day of pricing.
Any other questions, council members? Um, I have one quick, did you have? Okay, I have one quick, um, observation slash question, maybe for follow-up because I don't want to, um, fall off their schedule. Catherine's making a key point, our assessed valuation has been increasing. Is, I think it's probably increasing at a faster clip than our borrowing, although I don't recall perfectly if we had a line chart of our average debt or our total debt over the last 10, 15 years, is that level? Is it going up a little bit? I think it's been going up in recent years because we've taken on more sewer and water work, but yet our capacity is still trending favorable because of that assessed valuation. If, if, if I'm inferring correctly, I'd love to maybe do some follow-up email dialogue about this to understand what's going on. I mean, we've certainly heard the, um, concern by a lot of constituents who say, geez, my property value is going up. I feel the carrying costs of that in potential additional tax exposure. Um, it's also good that your property is increasing in value too. So it's, 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 it's also a benefit, but it's interesting to see concretely the benefit to the city's financial sheet. So instead of being at greater than 90% of our debt limit, we're down in the 63%, 62% uh, according to this, right? Uh, am I hearing that correctly? 6.2 mils instead of 9.3 mils?
Right.
Back a few years ago.
Right.
So that's, that's not because we've radically scaled back. I think we have been responsible over the years and have been mindful about paying off old bonds and refinancing the ones that are still in the middle of their payment schedule. Um, and that's why I respect the team here, uh, for being really attentive to that. But we're still slogging away at catching up on important infrastructure repair and maintenance and we're, we're going to be doing that for some years, um, according to the public works folks over here. So, um, so it's at least a, to the degree that that's accurate, I think that's an important point to understand that because the city of Lakewood now is worth 1.78 billion dollars.
In value.
In value.
Yeah. Property value.
Yeah, property value.
Right.
That, that has a multiple effect on what we're able to pay for basically.
So that, that amount, in the years where we do general obligation bonds, we always have a certificate that we calculated as of the day of closing that has the millage amount for the city of Lakewood. I mean, I could easily go back and do some historical research and just show you what that number, that 6.2 number is effectively, um, and if that would be helpful. The years that we did the income tax revenue, we didn't have it because, um, it wasn't, it wasn't a necessary requirement, but I could go back and do that for you. The other thing is last year you borrowed 6 million. I mean, that was a, a, you have these years of more significant new money and you have years of, you know, of.
Modest.
A very modest borrowing.
Okay. Good, good to know. I, 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 for me, that's helpful context to understand. I mean, essentially, you know, city of Lakewood's more than 100 years old, of course, we've got our costs, but we're also, we've been strengthening. So that means we have the financial ability to keep reinvesting and keeping the neighborhoods good and strong. So that's, that's encouraging.
Great. All right. So if we jump, um, if we jump ahead then to our plan of finance for this year, right? So now bringing it back specific to this year, uh, page 13 shows, uh, a total financing for this year of 32 million, 695. Uh, 6.3 million of that, right, as you can see on the top of page 13 is to retire the note that's coming due in April from last year, those projects of which there were four, excuse me, as you recall Catherine mentioning. And then there's over 26 million of new projects, right? So very, um, significant and aggressive projects this year, all of which are listed on the bottom of page 13, right? So 10 million is going to sewer improvements, right? Uh, 9 million to Water Main and so on and so forth, city facilities, streets, parks and sidewalks, right? So you can see all of those, um, actual project costs there. And then what I would say is most importantly for us geeky lawyers and, and finance folks would be the next page, 14, in terms of where you're paying this, right? So I know we've talked a lot about this in the past, but this is really, I think, slide 14, the critical slide. It shows exactly those same projects for the new money and then it shows the exact funds that are being used to pay for it, right? And finance tracks this to ensure that these funds have sufficient dollars to be able to pay for these projects. So, um, as you can imagine, the water and the sewer projects are paid out of the water sewer, uh, generated revenue with the remaining projects being paid out of the property tax that's dedicated for millage, right? So as you all recall, there is dedicated property tax unlike many, many cities across Ohio, unlike, um, Lakewood benefits from having that dedicated property tax, um, that you have to use for debt service, right? You can't use it to fund your general fund operations. You have other revenues to do that. This is just for capital and debt service. Um, and so again, uh, finance tracks sort of how that's performing, what's that's generating and ensures that, you know, together we all ensure that there's enough, um, money in that fund, uh, projected over time to be able to fund, you know, these certain amount of projects. So no operations, uh, should be impacted by this type of borrowing. Um, it's all dedicated revenue sources and that is not always common. We, we have a lot of municipal clients across Ohio where they're having to make policy discharges on, um, subtracting something else out of their general funds so that they can repave a road. Lakewood doesn't have that. So although Lakewood has, uh, more debt than some of these other cities, it, it, it's because you can take on more debt because you have these dedicated revenue sources, right? And the rating agencies, um, acknowledge that. That's why your rating has stayed where it has been, right? Even though you've had to borrow more. Uh, and they also appreciate and look at the fact that your valuation is growing too, which we've already talked about, right? So.
Yeah, and I just, I guess I'll follow on. I mean, so that, the, the upside of, of this, um, dry prudent, uh, work is that if we financially structure ourselves, that means as Jeff has been saying, we don't have to choose between human services and quality roads or improving the parks and helping people, uh, who need a new water heater and help insulating their home or the paint program. So that's a good thing. And I think that dates back longer than the eighties, is it the fifties or the thirties? I can't remember.
Yeah.
I think it's on that super chart that I alluded to before. Um, and you could keep score of when the last, you know, all, all these big financial decisions were, were created. So appreciate the overview.
So if there's, uh, no other questions about that, um, okay. So that, the, the, the schedule is in here. We don't have to harp on that. That's just showing the tasks involved in getting to the actual closing of the, the note this year, which would be in April. Um, a couple of slides in here on the credit rating. We've talked a lot about the city's current rating at AA2, so we won't harp on that, but this just gives some historical background on your credit rating. You can see it's been a AA2 now since back to, uh, 2010. Um, so very, very comfortable. Market is very comfortable with the city as a borrower. We put some commentary in here on slide, um, 18, uh, just from last year's commentary from Moody's, who is the rating agency that rates the city. Um, and certainly happy to, to dig into any of this if, if folks want to, um, jump into that. But what we added this year, which might be a little bit new, would be the, the, the next set of slides to give you a better sense of just sort of where the city's, um, overall financial performance, uh, has been trending, right? And it's, it's, it's extremely positive. It's why you're continuing to maintain that, that AA2 credit rating. And this is where we spend a lot of time with the rating agencies around, uh, the city's credit, right? Starting with page 19, um, the municipal income tax. Uh, I, I think you're all well aware and you've already made the comment tonight, income tax is the biggest city's, you know, biggest source of revenue for the city. Um, it's interesting if you're not aware, um, but over 80% of cities in Cuyahoga County have a higher income tax rate than Lakewood. Over 80% of cities in Cuyahoga County, uh, charge a higher income tax rate to, to, to their residents. So there is something to be said about you're doing all these projects. Your, your, uh, your point, councilman, around, um, not having to choose human service programs. Lakewood has great human service programs. They do a lot of infrastructure financing and you're doing it with revenue sources that yes, property tax values are going up, but that's not the city, like you're not going out and valuing the property, right? It, that, that's not the city. That's the county assessing that. Um, you're relying on your share of property tax, but you're also relying on your share of income tax, right? And you are on the low end in Cuyahoga County. Um, I, I would argue folks that live in Lakewood are getting very good, very good services and products for the revenue and the costs that they're paying for all of that, right? Cause you're on the low end of where your biggest revenue source is. You can see your income tax, even with the lower rate, is trending up. Um, you can see that your income stack, tax structure, the rates and the credit haven't been changed since 1981, right? So you're doing, you're living within your means and, and doing it well and the rating agencies, um, you know, credit you for that. Um, that's the income tax side. Uh, slides 20 and 21 deal with the property tax side. Slide 20 just talks about how the property tax millage that goes to Lakewood, how it's divided up, right? So not, not much to harp on other than the fact that you can see there's dedicated millage for debt service and, um, sewer and general capital coming out of the property tax millage, right? That has to be used for that. Um, and then lastly on 21, we actually didn't get the new assessed value number in this slide, but it's, but it, it was captured in the earlier debt limitation slides. So every three years, right, there's sort of an interim called triennial update to property values in, in Cuyahoga County. Uh, and then every six years, uh, there's a much larger sort of overall encompassing, um, assessed value review. And, uh, the last triennial, the, the year here, um, is the actual collection year in the, on page 21 here. Uh, so collection year would be based on the value of the property from the year prior. So in 2024, the assessed value was a million three. That's what was collected in terms of, uh, uh, taxes based on that value in last year in 2024. But the value was determined back in 2023. So you can see, um, between 21 and 22, every three years is when you see your biggest jump in assessed value. Uh, 21 to 22 was a little shy of 400 million in an increase. Now we're at another triennial. That number is generally known. That's the number from previous slides that is around a million seven, eight, one. So right around a million eight. So you're, you're continuing to trend upward.
It's a billion, right?
Sorry, did I say a million?
Yeah.
I meant to say four, uh, 400 million, actually. Um, the, the assessed value would be one, you're right, 1 billion, right? A billion, uh, 471, I believe is what the new number, I'm sorry, a billion 781, right? Is your new assessed value. So you're going from 1 billion, 370 million to now 1 billion, uh, 700 and what was it? 81, uh, million. So you're, you're seeing that jump in assessed value, um, even be greater than it was three years ago, right? So that's, uh, I think, councilman, your earlier point, we, we all probably are seeing that in our property values now, right? And so some folks are going to see their taxes go up. That's not a function of the city raising taxes, right? It's a function of just their property being, you know, valued at, at a higher level. And there's, you know, good, good and bad to that, I guess, right? So, um, but again, very healthy growth on, on behalf of the city. So we'll, we'll stop there. Happy to answer more questions, um, but our, our request would, would be for adoption, um, I think at the next meeting, right? So not, not tonight, but I think in the March meeting so that we would be able to sell the, or is it tonight?
No, it's either tonight or.
Okay.
Third reading tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yep. Our plan would be to sell the debt later in March and then close in early April so we could pay off the note that's coming due. But happy to answer any questions before you, uh, you move on to, I think, the lease discussion.
Thank you. Council members' questions? Um, I, I appreciate the, the big picture overview. I'd certainly welcome, uh, a page 21, maybe this is not to ask for Jeff and Catherine to do it necessarily, but, or whomever on the finance team, but it would be wonderful to, to see this chart extended back to, you know, 2010, 28, 2008, something like that. Just the historical context, right? Well, you know, you know, what'd be fantastic would be to see 2005, 6, 7, because we all took a hit in the mortgage foreclosure crisis. We all worked very hard to maintain those property values and qualities. And then I think in the mid 20 teens, things were level until they began to accelerate. So anyway, um, to the degree that's easy enough to pull together this chart, it would be wonderful to.
Sure.
To see. Um, okay. Um, so for on the docket or on the, uh, committee agenda tonight, um, the legislation that we're talking about is, um, okay. So the first, uh, ordinance two dash 2025 is transfer in advance of certain funds. We should talk about that, um, also tonight, but what we've been talking about are ordinances.
04 to 10.
Four through 10. Okay. Um, so to briefly review those, it's 6.3 million, million for the listed facilities, 2.2 million for Edgewater Drive and Summit, 4 million for Winterhurst, our station three, public worse garage and other facilities, 9.3 million for, uh, water improvements, 300,000 for sidewalks. I will note, I think that's a smaller allocation than we've had in previous years. I'm an advocate for not backing off of the sidewalk improvement program, but, but we have, what we have before us tonight, $500,000 in Kaufman Park, Lakewood Park and other park improvements and 10 million for sewer related improvements. Is that clear to council members? Any questions? Any comments from the administration? Are we ready for some motions? Um, so, um, unless there's a, an objection, um, I guess I'd like to move to suspend the rules of the committee to make a joint motion to recommend for adoption of full council ordinances four dash 2025 through 10 dash 2025. So that's a motion to suspend the rules in committee.
I think you can just do it, but I'll second it. You're the boss here.
Uh, parliamentarian Vargo, uh, do you, do you have a strong opinion about how we conduct this? I, I just moved to suspend the rules in committee. I don't know that we need.
Yeah, I've got to admit, I'm not following you closely.
Okay. That's all right. So let's say without objection, we'll, we'll.
How about I make a motion to, to favorably refer ordinance 004 through 0010 back to full council.
Dash 2025. I'll second your motion. Any discussion, councilwoman? Any other questions, comments from council members? Okay. That's the motion hearing. Uh, no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, you guys have it.
The, the one thing I would note, Tom, um, and to, um, our fine folks, um, Catherine, Jeff, if we could get this presentation like maybe a week in advance, I know every year you come and you give this.
Sure.
And I'm sure you may rush put together on Monday or Tuesday, whatever the day is, but, um, there's a lot of great information. And if we had like a couple more days to dig into it, it may make it more fruitful.
Yeah, very fair. Apps, sure. Happy to do that. That's, I, I apologize. That's my.
Councilman, did you ha- you had some bigger picture questions about financial strategy? And did we cover that at all or in part tonight? Or do we need to do that again in a follow-up discussion?
Yeah, I think it's more follow-up and it's something that, um, Dr. Mahoney, Mahoney and I have talked about where it's, you know, the use of bond anticipation notes to pay for stuff that you may get revenue a little bit later in the year on. Do we really want to? If you look at the cream on the, on the financing pot, right? We put, we, we took out 6.3 in bond anticipation notes last year. I think we paid about 200 or 300 grand in interest. You know, it's just, um, and that's something I think of further conversation about whether or not we should just try to eat that without paying the financing costs. Um, I think that's more of a strategy going forward. I don't think we can switch that right now. Uh, but that 200 or 300 grand, you know, that's a couple of FTEs or that's a park improvement. But that 200 or 300 grand, you know, that's a couple of FTEs, or that's a park improvement, so it's real money for the city. In my day job, I worked for an organization that doesn't have any debt, and so that takes a whole different kind of framing, we have a different revenue source, we work differently, we're in a 10-year cycle, so it's not the same, it's apples and oranges, but I do think we could try to move further down that path.
So, we've got to keep moving, but do you understand, kind of with the point he's driving at, the councilman's driving at, and could we, you know, it may make sense to have a follow-up hearing in the future so we can all benefit, you know, from that discussion? I think I follow in part, which is, if there's a timing difference, could we narrow the amount of financial fees that we're carrying and use those savings for other purposes? There probably are some ability, but not perfect ability, to do that, I would guess. But would that be worth considering discussing from the experts at the table here?
Yeah, so the balance is weighing the life of the asset and the financing, you know, over terms of the asset versus, you know, paying for assets now that, you know, you'd be using over the next 20 years, or, so there's a balance in that.
Okay. So we'll start with whatever follow-up, just informational dialogue after this hearing, and we may invite you for another discussion, you know, maybe after the financial season's done, so midsummer or something, would that make sense? Okay, thank you. How are we doing on time? We've got three minutes, two and a half minutes, so why don't we do the transfer in advances ordinance? Director Mahoney, would you like to...
Sure, I'm a very quick talker, I could do both in three minutes. Transfers and leases, but anyway, the transfers are just, you know, part of the budget, and the advances in are from the end of '24, you know, to, we advance money to various funds, for example, CDPG and things like that. And then this is just the advances in for those, from those funds. And, yeah, it was all outlined in the budget, I'm not sure how much detail you want me to go in, but...
Hey, council members, can you see this on your screens? It's, there's a chart in the ordinance itself that lays it out. I have one comment, which is, I think the Winterhurst transfer is new, I don't recall that being routinely part of what we've done for many years. I know we've been reinvesting the facility, but this presumably, is this operating costs, you know, so staff and expenses as opposed to the capital improvements?
Mr. Chairman, this is the third year that we've done quarterly transfers to Winterhurst. And again, also to the aging fund, we've traditionally always done advances, I mean, transfers to those ones.
I do recall that, so forgive my imperfect memory in Winterhurst. So the answer to the question I'm driving at, is that for utilities, is that for staffing? What are those expenditures covering at Winterhurst? Okay. Okay, any comments or questions? Otherwise, I'd like to say, make a motion that we recommend ordinance 2-2025 to the full council for adoption.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. The leasing, would we like to bring that back next time, or can we quickly try to address it right now? Council President Keppel, I'm looking in your direction.
I'm guessing we have staff here to address it now, I don't want to make them sit through another meeting, as long as we can do it quickly so that we aren't holding people up for full council. So do we think we could do it relatively quickly, so that we can still get to full council by maybe 7:35?
Yep.
Okay, let's do that.
Director Mahoney.
Yes, like I said, I can talk fast. So, the capital leases total, $3,614,000. Again, these were all included in the budget, no surprises there. I just, I don't know if you have, you have the list in front of you, yeah. So probably easier if there's any questions from council, nothing out of the ordinary that we're leasing this year.
Okay, and a lease for...
It's actually a own, leases, you know, it's...
Leasing is, in this case, a financial term where, not that we're going to a dealership and temporarily leasing a vehicle, like a family vehicle, this is a financial term that essentially means we're paying, it's a multi-year traditional loan that we pay off over a period of years. In this case, it's, is it 10 years?
Five years.
Five years, okay, five-year payments for what's listed in ordinance 3-2025, yes...
Not to exceed 8%.
Not to, sorry?
The interest rate not to exceed 8%.
Okay, not to exceed 8%. And then, these vehicles were called out in the budget, we did see that, I don't think we discussed in detail, you know, or we discussed as much as we could in December. Did, I think another council member had a question, was it Councilwoman Strebig? Did you have a comment? Yeah, I thought the public works director sent a spreadsheet to answer questions, I can't recall who.
I did.
Okay.
I received it, I looked it over, I thought it was very good. I did have some questions about some stuff that we've had since 1987. That's good to know, that there are some things that are still hanging on out there. We've got a cement mixer from 1987 still hanging on, and is that the kind of equipment that we don't replace on a regular basis, that we just run it until the wheels fall off?
Yes, Councilwoman Strebig, some of the older equipment we have, as I think with what anybody has in their homes, you know, some of the older things are old, reliable, I like to call it. So they were manufactured a little bit differently back then than they were today. So certain things will run until they can no longer run, yes.
And Director Gordon, can you introduce the gentleman sitting to your right?
I mean, if I have to. So to my right is James Holman, he is our Fleet Division Manager, for those of you that do not know him up there. But yes, in certain situations, we will run things until they can't run anymore, other things, not so much.
So then, other things, Mr. Chair, would be things based on mileage? Would we have a, when it hits this number of miles, and we start to look at getting rid of it?
We replace equipment based on several factors, but age and condition are typically first. But again, it all depends on a few different factors we determine internally, but yes, it's safe to say that age and condition are typically first.
Thank you.
Mr. Holman, anything to add? Welcome.
We try to get the most use out of our equipment that we possibly can before it starts nickel and dime us too much. Some of these pieces you're referring to, those 1987 models, I mean, we don't use them, but maybe once or twice a year, typically don't require a lot of maintenance, so as long as they're still performing, I don't see no reason to replace them.
And we don't have any safety concerns then with those, because they're getting a little bit older, that they could become dangerous for any of our employees to use?
No, because we have a preventive maintenance program that we run with all of our vehicles and equipment that gets inspected on a regular basis, or by timeframe, or whatever factor we've determined for it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're out of time, let's, I'd like to move that we recommend to the full council for adoption ordinance 3-2025.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and without objection, the committee is adjourned.
It'll take just a couple of minutes to reset for full council, so if we can be back in like, three minutes, that would be great.
Right before Luke was born.
If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Legions. Now take a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Baker?
Here.
Bullock?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Keppel?
Here.
Marks?
Here.
Steiner?
Here.
Strebig?
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held February 3rd, 2025.
Move to approve without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye, and that motion passes.
Item 1, report from Finance Committee meeting held today, February 18, 2025.
Councilmember Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met immediately prior to this meeting tonight, we had a thoughtful discussion of multiple ordinances, all of which were favorably reported out for, with recommendations for adoption. Collectively, those were the financial, financing ordinances for our capital investments, called for in the budget that we approved last December, as well as for vehicles, as well as one ordinance for quarterly transfers between accounts in the city for carrying out the budget as we adopted it. Also, as part of the discussion, we heard from our bond counsel and our finance banker with Key Bank, and they presented a helpful overview and history of our debt, the big picture, the current situation, how the proposed financing for the current year will impact all of that, and as usual, they do a thorough job of not only informing us, but of tending to the city's overall debt, positioning us to pay the least amount of interest, and helping us understand the context. So I thought it was productive, thank you to Director Mahoney for helping to set that up and lead us in a productive discussion. Move to receive and file that oral report.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? I'll just add our thanks to the finance team, our guests and Public Works for being prepared for that thoughtful discussion today, and also to Councilman Bullock for leading us through, well done. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye, and that motion passes. Oh, I will move to suspend the rules to read items 2 through 10 together.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye, and that motion passes.
Item 2, ordinance 2, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the transfer in advance of certain funds. Item 3, ordinance 3, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately, authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into equipment leases and forms approved by the Director of Law on behalf of the City of Lakewood. Item 4, ordinance 4, 2025, an ordinance authorizing issuance of notes and amounts not to exceed $6,320,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of constructing a refuse recycling facility, renovating refuse truck parking facility, replacing or improving the roofs of public buildings, including the municipal facilities garage, improving the heating, ventilation and air conditioning systems at the fire station, improving parks, including pavement and sidewalk resurfacing and construction, lighting and landscaping, together with all necessary site work, infrastructure improvements and appurtenances thereto, improving sidewalks within the city and improving Bunce Road, Crest Lane, Gail Avenue, Onondaga Avenue, Wayne Avenue and Webb Road and other streets located within the city between certain termini by resurfacing and replacing concrete, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and retiring notes previously issued for such purpose and approving related matters. Item 5, ordinance 5, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the issuance of notes and the amount of not to exceed $2,200,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of improving Edgewater Drive, Summit Avenue and other streets located within the city between certain termini by resurfacing and replacing concrete, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and approving related matters.
Item 6, ordinance 6-2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately provided it receives the vote of at least two-thirds of council, authorizing the issuance of notes and the amount of not to exceed $4,500,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of improving City Hall, Winterhurst Ice Arena, Fire Station Number 3, Public Works Garage and other city facilities, including renovating city facilities, improving the heating, ventilation and air conditioning systems, constructing a storage facility. Item 7, ordinance 7-2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of designing, engineering, constructing water improvements, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and approving related matters. Item eight, ordinance eight dash 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the issuance of notes and the amount of not to exceed three hundred thousand in anticipation of the issuances of bonds to pay costs of improving sidewalks within the city and approving related matters. Item nine, ordinance nine dash 2025, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of notes and the amount of not to exceed five hundred thousand in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of improving parks within the city, including Lakewood Park, Kaufman Park, and other park improvements, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and approving related matters. Ordinance ten dash 2025, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of notes and the amount of not to exceed ten million in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of designing, engineering, constructing sewer improvement, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and approving related matters.
I will move to adopt items two through ten.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item eleven, communication from President Keppel regarding recodification of ordinances.
Colleagues, this is just our sort of quarterly update to our codified ordinances based on what we've already passed. You can see the communication, but it's pretty standard. So I'll move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twelve, ordinance eleven, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances and to provide for the publication of such new matter.
Move to defer.
Uh, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? We're just deferring so we can get our standard three readings, and if anyone feels like we need to discuss it at any time, just let me know. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item thirteen, letter of support for proposed Barton Place Apartments.
All right, so just a little context. I know all my colleagues received communication from Barton Center about this. So this is to submit a letter of support for the project that is proposed on the old Hilliard Theater parcel to create affordable senior housing, and this is for tax credits for that. I don't know, do we have anyone signing to speak or? Allison, did you want to speak about this at all? You don't have to, but if you wanted to at all? Okay. Okay. All right, so this is really just procedural in order to, I know that I'm very happy to support this and grateful for this proposal that would create senior housing as well as a permanent home for Lakewood Alive, all around a great investment in our community, and also great to have all of that population living and supporting the local businesses in the area as well. So really a strength for our community and a great use of these tax credits for that affordable housing for our very valuable seniors. So I am going to move, make a motion to add the signatures of all council members. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Bullock.
I agree with your points that I welcome and enthusiastically support the project. I guess could, would it be okay if we asked the representative for Barton to explain the status where this is? This is a done deal, not a done deal. We're supporting this application letter, I think, because it's not a done deal, but the nine percent, as I recall, is a higher level of financing from the agencies that provide this financing. I guess I'd welcome a little refresher on that.
Sure. Yeah, so Allison Urbannick from Barton Communities, do you mind coming up? Okay? Okay. Great. That's wonderful. Matt, if you don't mind just saying your name into the microphone so anyone watching the recording knows.
Good evening, I'm Matt Orhak with Barton Communities. So the Barton Place Apartments project is applying for competitive nine percent low-income housing tax credits. And so essentially, that differs from other forms of low-income housing tax credits in that it's a competitive amount that's more than double the amount of other tax credits available to non-competitive projects. And so at this stage, we submitted a pre-application in early January, received approval from the Ohio Housing Finance Agency on that application to move forward to the proposal application. And so next week, we will submit a proposal to receive those competitive tax credits in approximately the amount of fourteen million five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, give or take a few dollars. And then what we then do is then we sell those tax credits with our friends that we hear from KeyBank to an investor, and then we use that tax credit equity to plow it right directly into the project. So almost dollar for dollar of the credits generated go right to creating the new affordable housing. And so as part of the application that we submit February twenty-seventh, there's about a twenty-five to thirty percent chance of success. With that, we will be applying under the Ohio Housing Finance Agency's Strategic Initiatives, which essentially allows the state financing agency to award two projects across the state that either don't necessarily meet the scoring criteria or didn't score the highest in the pool, to award those projects for projects that receive significant community support and that they understand are desired by the communities regardless of kind of that scoring criteria. And so we believe that with the combination between the Barton Center, Lakewood Alive, the Senior Center, and then all of your support, that we can make a strong case for why the Housing Finance Agency should award us. And so once we submit February twenty-seventh, we will then sit around and wait until the end of May and see if we receive an award, and then at that point in time hustle the next roughly year and a half to a financial closing and construction completion.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? The Councilwoman Marx.
Madam President, I'm very much in favor of this project. Barton Communities has been longstanding here in Lakewood, providing housing for seniors, and certainly we need much more of it. So I'm very excited that you're taking on this new project to create housing for seniors like me. So thank you for all the hard work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Evans?
Yeah, it's, barely a week goes by when we don't talk about affordable housing amongst this group. So to have a concrete plan in front of us that we hope goes forward is just really great to see. So I'm also happy to support the effort.
Vice President Baker?
Thank you, yeah. I'm happy to support it, as I indicated to Allison and the other folks at Barton. Obviously, design, how it looks, all those things are to come. But I have a couple of family members who have recently, the OLA project that you guys did. And it's really just, you know, having secure housing for a reasonable price for a senior is life-changing, and also for their family, knowing they're safe. So this is the kind of product we need in Lakewood, so happy to support it. Thank you.
Other councilmembers, comments or questions?
Madam President, one more thought for me. I'd noticed it's also age fifty-five and older. I have been approached from time to time by constituents over the years who are younger than sixty-five looking for this. And I think Barton has some, but not all, existing housing units available for fifty-five. But in any case, that's a premium category, perhaps. So I welcome that feature.
Thank you, and that is a new aspect of our portfolio, the fifty-five and older?
Yep, so typically on our projects, so we either own or own and manage a little over eleven hundred units. And so typically, projects that have a HUD Housing Assistance Payments contract or some other HUD voucher program, either project-based or resident-based, are sixty-two plus, whereas the Ohio LI-Tech program requires you to do fifty-five plus. So it does allow you to bring the age down a little bit. And then too, just speaking on the affordability aspect, we did just receive our market study today. And an item of note that you might all be interested in is for comparable units across the primary market area, so basically Lakewood, sort of East Rocky River, West Park area, the typical one-bedroom apartment rent is about twelve hundred and forty dollars, give or take a few dollars. Our rents are currently being underwritten at one thousand thirty-nine dollars, which is lower than the maximum LI-Tech rent, and about a little over eighteen percent more, or sorry, eighteen percent less than average market rents. So this project would allow residents to rent a new apartment at more than eighteen percent less than market rate.
Thank you. And so I just wanted to touch base to, if not successful in this round, there's another opportunity, is that correct?
Yes, there's actually probably two other opportunities. So what we would do is if unsuccessful in May, we would likely apply for the Ohio State Low Income Housing Tax Credit, which is a state program that generally offers a little bit less equity, but think we could probably make a deal pencil with that. So we would apply for that, and I believe the deadline's in July, so we would try for that. And then if unsuccessful with the state LI-Tech program, would then apply again in February of next year.
Great, thank you. And I'm sure you will, and I'm sure our planning team will as well, but please keep us in the loop about this because we're all obviously very excited about it. So, and thank you for choosing Lakewood and this property.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to add all of our signatures. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Strebing?
Thank you. Just wondering if this is also something going forward that this organization would look at other vacant properties in our town as we continue to age and look for single-floor residents for other people? If this is a model for you going forward, that you continue to do this specifically, had some neighbors on Marlowe today. Remind me that there's a property on the corner of Marlowe and Detroit that is not being shoveled, and I thought, hmm, what organization could help us with some snow shoveling on that corner? Wouldn't it be nice if that was part of your portfolio there too?
Thank you so much. Of course, yes, we're always looking for new opportunities. Right now, there's approximately two hundred people on every property's waiting list that we have in our portfolio, so we know that there is a desperate need. And through the Lincoln Institute study from 2019, we know that there is approximately a shortage of fifteen hundred units for affordable housing in our community, which is five and a half square miles, that has twelve thousand six hundred one and two-family homes, and there's a fifteen hundred unit shortage for affordable housing. So we are looking wherever we can to find projects like these to put them into our portfolio because we know, and Councilwoman Baker said it, affordable, steady, clean, safe housing is a foundation for anyone's success. So whatever we can do to continue to grow that, we will do that. So absolutely, if you see anything, please let us know. We are looking into other projects in other communities in North Ridgeville, in Cleveland-on-Puritus, as well as potentially Oberlin, but we will definitely keep our eyes open for additional properties here in Lakewood. So thank you so much. We appreciate your support and for the suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment? Just add to, this was a somewhat unique opportunity in that the city owned this property, so, and it was one of the few vacant lots we have in Lakewood, so just, but always good to keep the eye out, too. All right, so we have a motion and a second to add all signatures. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item fourteen, communication from Public Works Director Gordon regarding 2025 County Road Preventive Maintenance Reimbursement Program.
Director Gordon?
Thank you. Dear President Keppel, members of City Council, the city's Division of Streets and Forestry was awarded one hundred and four thousand four hundred dollars in the Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works 2025 County Road Preventive Maintenance Reimbursement Program. The Streets Division will use this reimbursement funding to perform crack ceiling, crack ceiling, excuse me, pavement marking, and when needed, pavement repairs on county roads. As part of the reimbursement program, the county will process only for material costs, and the total reimbursable cost for the year 2025 may not exceed one hundred and four thousand four hundred dollars. Pursuant to Lakewood Codified Ordinance Section 111.14B, this letter serves as notice of our intentions to accept these funds. Please let me know if you have any further questions.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Thank you, Director Gordon, and to your team for getting us money. So always appreciate that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item fifteen, communication from Public Works Director Gordon regarding 2025 Lead Service Line Replacement Project.
Director Gordon again.
All right, thank you again. Dear President Keppel, members of City Council, the above referenced project entails construction of lead service line replacements on both the public and private side for Cannon Avenue, Jackson Avenue, and Waterbury Road. The attached resolution is required in order to move forward with the project's funding. The city has secured six hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents in funding through the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account, WSRLA, which includes fifty-three percent principal forgiveness for lead service line replacements and related necessary items such as curb stops and temporary pavement for the project. This six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar project is expected to be funded as follows. I certainly won't read every line there. I request that City Council approve and pass the attached legislation on first reading so the project may proceed and be prepared for EPA funding on March first, 2025. I just want to make sure everybody's aware that this project was passed within our capital improvement program. This is just funding for that project. Unfortunately, with certain funding opportunities, we have to jump on them as soon as we're made aware of them. So again, that's why I'm asking for this to be passed on first reading.
Thank you. All right, I'll move to receive and file the communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Councilwoman Strebing first.
Thank you. Director Gordon, could you just speak to the choice of those three streets? Are those streets that were slated to have like full street repairs, or are we just going in to do the lead service lines at this time?
So these three streets are called out to be resurfaced this year within our CDBG program. This is just our pilot program for the lead service line replacements. So therefore, these three streets were selected because they are going to be repaved later this year.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Steiner?
Just a clarification question. Director Gordon, is any of this funding federal at all, do you know, that's getting passed through the Ohio EPA? And if so, is there any risk of that not being realized?
Great question. At this time, we have not been told otherwise that this funding is still available. Understanding your question is another reason why we're trying to jump on it as quickly as possible.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
So yes, we are aware and we are monitoring.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Any further discussion, questions? All right, hearing none on the motion to receive and file the communication. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item sixteen, Resolution 2025-05, a resolution authorizing the mayor, director of public works, finance director, or purchasing manager to apply for, accept, and enter into a water supply revolving loan account agreement on behalf of the City of Lakewood for the construction of the 2025 Lead Service Line Replacement Project and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Councilman Bullock?
I've got a question for Director Gordon. It's actually on a previous item, the item fourteen. I just thought of the question about the county road reimbursement, which I think technically is out of order, but if you don't mind me asking, is that, are those funds, one hundred four thousand four hundred dollars, just materials, or does it also cover some of our labor?
It's just for material costs.
Okay, all right, thanks. Just curious.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item seventeen, January 2025 Finance Department Vendor Report submitted pursuant to Lakewood Codified Ordinance 111-03.
We have, we have the report? We don't have it in the? It's in the?
It's in the docket.
It's just not, somehow it didn't get into granted, because, but it was published in the docket, so. So I will move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item eighteen, liquor permit for sacred hour at 17514 Detroit Avenue.
Director Vargo? Or do we have any?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We reviewed the police report. This, really, the applicant is simply moving locales and was already licensed on the liquor. So there's, the law department sees no statutory basis to object. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilman Baker?
I see no statutory reason to object either.
Awesome. Glad they're staying in Lakewood.
Yeah, it's the old rectory.
Yeah, it's the old rectory of St. James, which is interesting.
Oh, yeah, it's kind of a, kind of a mix.
Yeah, they can grow and stay in Lakewood.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, great. So with that, I will move to file without objection.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. That brings us to the end of the agenda, onto public comment. Do we have, oh, we're getting signed in. We have some folks. Oh, and we do have a number of ecomments, so we can go and put those up. Mostly, it's like, one, two, three. So mostly, so four really, it says three in support, but really four, I guess, so in support of the Bunts Road project, as well as biking and pedestrian transit. Okay. All right, so we've also got some folks signed in to speak. As most of you have been here before, you know the drill, but when you come up, make sure the microphone is, should have a green light on it. We push the button, and then you'll get five minutes. Address the chair. Keep your remarks civil, and we'll get started. So first up is Shannon Mortland. You can push the button so it's green. There you go, perfect.
Okay. Shannon Mortland, 21, 25 Bunts. So obviously, you know I'm here again to talk about our opposition for the Bunts Road project, and not all of it, actually. I'm not opposed to the rehabilitation of bunts, as we stated before. I think a lot of it is great. It's just the ill-advised and ill-fated multi-use path. Aside from the multi-use path, the plan has a lot of good qualities, as I said. Not opposed to bike lanes. I have a bicycle, my husband and I ride throughout the city, and the first thing we do is turn off of bunts, just to be safe. So in fact, bike lanes, when they're placed in the right location, great idea. Now, in planning the Bunts Road Rehab Project, we've been told by various city officials that, you know, there is various research, and that evidence that a multi-use, nope, excuse me, multi-use path is necessary. So I want to remind the city of the results of some of its own surveys. So these are the results of the Lakewood Active Transportation Plan Community Survey, December 22nd to March 2023. Question was, what are your concerns when walking and biking in Lakewood? Only Clifton and Detroit are mentioned, not Bunts. Another question, what should the city do to make walking and biking in Lakewood more comfortable? Choose your top five. Now, I'll give you a hint, there is no mention of bunts. 61% say maintain sidewalks, trails, and bikeways, not build new. And what types of places do you want to walk or bike to the most? 69% say parks and playgrounds. 44% say downtown Lakewood. And lastly, only 38% said to a school. So putting a multi-use path on Bunts takes people from the freeway, up one of Lakewood's busiest streets, as you know, and to Lakewood's widest street at Clifton. It does not lead to the top destinations of parks, playgrounds, or downtown Lakewood. And according to the city's own research, the multi-use path planned for Bunts solves for none of the issues Lakewood residents cited. Therefore, the plan for multi-use path on Bunts should be revised to drop the multi-use path and focus tax dollars on initiatives that, initiatives that all of us will benefit from. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, next up is Dave Mortland. Welcome back.
Evening. Again, speaking out against the project on Bunts Road. First, I'd like to state that I'm not opposed to the Bunts Rehab Plan as a whole, just the multi-use path. Not also opposed to bike lanes, if planned well and safe. I would like to state more evidence from the city's own studies that prove that this multi-use path is unnecessary. In your Lakewood Active Transportation Plan Survey conducted December 2022, March 2023, excuse me, you asked a question, tell us about specific areas that you enjoy walking and biking in Lakewood. What characteristics do you like? Top answer, residential streets with low vehicle traffic volume. Bunts Road is extremely busy. During the week of October 17th, 2022, the City of Lakewood asked teachers at the city's schools to poll their students on how they traveled to and from school. Whether mornings or evenings, less than 3% rode bicycles. 66% were driven in the morning, 52%, 52% were picked up by the vehicle at the end of the day. The rest of the majority walked, or there were some car pulls, of course. According to the Federal Highway Administration in 2019, only about 10% of kids nationwide rode their bikes to school. In 2024, the FHA said that number dropped below 1%. The city's own research shows that multi-use path is unnecessary and a waste of taxpayer funds. Further, the city can still receive the funds ODOT has provided to the Bunts Rehabilitation Project even without the multi-use plan, according to one government official we spoke to. The path can be built anywhere in the city, for the city to receive the funds. I urge the city to drop the multi-use, multi-use path from Bunts as a matter of safety and practicality. We've also distributed information to every house on Bunts, and as of right now, we have 165 people on Bunts Road who don't want this. Please listen to our neighborhood.
Thank you. All right, next up, Cassandra Organ.
Good evening, City Council, administration, and staff. My name is Cassie Organ, and I'm here today to thank you for your hard work and continued commitment to making Lakewood safer and more inclusive for people in and outside of a car, specifically when it comes to the Bunts Road Rehab Project. I also want to thank you for making information on this project available via your website and other platforms, which is how I initially heard about the project and got involved. As noted in the FAQ section of this site, it's stated that this project has been proposed because Bunts, as is, has been identified by the city as a corridor with the highest potential risk for bicycle and pedestrian crashes. One major advantage of this plan is that it provides a dedicated, separate space for people to participate in active transportation, such as walking, running, and biking. This will add necessary protection for our most vulnerable road users and create an accessible main north-south corridor that networks with other bike infrastructure and routes commonly used by people outside of a vehicle. This helps residents and commuters from outside of Lakewood access more of what our city has to offer. In addition, one side of the street on Bunts will continue to offer a standard sidewalk, which is another example of how this project provides many choices for how people may prefer to navigate their route while traveling along Bunts. Speaking of sidewalks, another perk to this path is that it will be maintained and cleared of snow by the city. So as one of our council members mentioned just a little bit ago, the last few days have highlighted how difficult it can be in the winter to commute by really any method. So specifically, the sidewalks can be difficult because those are currently something that's supposed to be maintained by home and business owners, and they don't always get to them for various reasons. So having a space that is maintained by the city is providing an opportunity for inclusivity for people of all ages and abilities who take active routes to get to the schools, stores, restaurants, and other amenities made available along this roadway. I look forward to the Bunts Road Project breaking ground and cannot wait to use the multi-use path on my daily commutes. I, like so many Lakewood residents, am proud to call our city Ohio's most walkable and bikeable. I commend the efforts that are being made to encourage active transportation and make our city a safer, more equitable, and engaging community. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, next up is Kim McDonald.
I am Kim McDonald, 1460 Bunts Road. I would have to say that I agree with most everything that our last speaker had to say. I think this plan looks fabulous, and it would be absolutely wonderful in any location, but, well, I should not even say any location. It would be wonderful in a less busy area. I've spoken before about the traffic on Bunts, which shouldn't be a surprise to anyone on how busy it is. So safety is something that, that comes up a lot with our neighbors and with myself, that because of such heavy traffic, this will be adding more traffic and various modes, which is definitely not needed. A reduction in traffic would actually be needed much more. Many accidents do happen at driveways on bike trails, and there are lots of driveways, and of course, there are on every street, but being that there is such congestion on Bunts makes it extra difficult to get in and out of driveways, and between watching for pedestrians and all the cars to get in and out, and having bikes which would, or could be coming at a quicker pace, and also on decline, would make it very difficult to be maneuvering in and out in a safe manner without the risk of hitting someone. You know, I noticed that Nowaka has already identified connector streets in Lakewood, and, you know, Bunts is not one of them. And I think that the funding for the, for the multi-use path that was in this project for Bunts Road should be shifted to those other areas to bolster the safety there. And it only makes sense to me and people that I've spoken to, cyclists, pedestrians alike, it's just a less busy speed, a street would be a much better choice. In fact, one of ODOT considerations is to use minor streets, those carrying a lower volume of traffic. And I haven't done a traffic study, but I venture to guess that Bunts Road is one of the most highly trafficked streets in our north-south, in our city, which make it really inappropriate, I think, for this path. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Amy Herberger. Looks like Matt, but it scratched out, so I wasn't sure. Sure, okay, yep.
She's the closer.
Okay, she's the closer.
She's the closer.
All right.
Mind no flaws, eh, for those who watch baseball.
You're on, yep.
Thank you. Matt Herberger, 1448 Bunts Road. I have a bunch of stuff written down, and I've appeared before you. And with all due respect, I wish I was at home watching TV. I don't want to be here, but I have to be here because I think this is a bad idea. Specifically, I'm talking about the multimodal path that's part of the Bunts Rehabilitation Project. You know, I think we've made, as citizens and as residents, I think we've come before you before, we've made legitimate arguments. I think we've, we've outlined clearly here and on other times, there's a lot of questions that are left to be answered about this plan. And, you know, it's a tough thing to admit when you've made a mistake, or it's a tough thing to say, I'm wrong. But it's even worse to continue to push something that does not make sense. I sit here before you, I have talked to neighbors, and I get it, there are people that support this, I get it. Bicycle paths, in theory, are nice. This is the wrong place, the wrong time. Everyone I talk to, I wonder, I appeal to you, because everyone I talk to, citizens, friends, neighbors, out-of-towners, anybody that's been on Bunts Road, says, this does not make sense. A bike path on this road does not make sense. I ask you to pause and to think about it, because we are just here as regular people, as regular citizens, appealing to you, our elected representatives, to please take into account our opinions and our thoughts. We've spent a lot of time and money and hard work making Lakewood great. We have. We live on that street. We take care of it. We're proud of it. We need you to respond to us. We need you to include us, the citizens. This is what's wrong right now with the whole political situation. Listen to the people. And I just want to bring something else up a little more practical before I leave. I've looked at the funding, and someone brought up the EPA funding. I've looked at the funding for complete streets. I know it says it's from ODOT, but that money ultimately comes from federal sources, and I encourage, I warn all of you, we need to look at anything that has federal funding because in this political environment, we're not going to see any of it. And nobody wants to be on the hook for a $5 million bike path that the federal government said they were going to pay for, and there's no funds for it. And the city, we end up paying for it. I encourage you, not just for this, but for every project we have, I hope to God, I trust you, you are intelligent people. We need to look at where all these funding sources are, because I can assure you, that money's not coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now Amy Herberger.
Amy Herberger, 1448 Bunts Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to voice my concerns in opposition to the proposed Bunts Road Rehab Project. While I fully support improving infrastructure, I believe this plan presents serious safety risks that we cannot overlook. True leadership isn't about listening to the community, adapting when necessary, and making decisions based on facts. It's about recognizing when it's time to reassess and take a more thoughtful approach. This is the essence of a responsible stewardship and building a brighter future for all of us. With that in mind, I respectfully urge you to reconsider the Bunts Road Plan. As it stands, it does not meet the needs of our community, and it may not be the best use of our resources. We should explore alternatives that truly benefit everyone. First and foremost, let's talk about safety. The proposal includes a bike lane with 116 intersections along a 1.5-mile stretch of road. This is simply not safe for pedestrians, cyclists, or drivers. Our areas' traffic patterns are suited, are not suited for a bike lane of this scale. Data shows that fewer than 3% of local high school students rely on bicycles for transportation. Most cyclists using this lane would be likely from areas outside the immediate vicinity, making this project misalign with the community's needs. As taxpayers, we must ask, does this project truly benefit us? The plan feels out of touch, and we risk investing resources in something that we may not provide the expected value. We need to focus on solutions that generally improve our community, not just follow through on plans because they are already in motion. True leadership means reassessing and finding better solutions when new information comes to light. Another important issue is transparency. Most of us was caught off guard by this proposal, and the planning process should have been more open and collaborative. The images shared by the city are misleading and don't accurately represent the scale of the project. The proposed 10-foot bike lane is essentially another roadway, not a sidewalk. The treelons on my street will be reduced by more than half, creating safety concerns. Parking lane widths are being reduced, and will, and it will take decades, if ever, for the trees to fully grow back. The renderings on the city's website show wide streets, large grass areas, and trees everywhere, but none of these are true to scale, okay? This is not a fair or accurate representation of the project, and residents deserve a clearer and more truthful depiction. Additionally, we must consider the environmental impact. Removing all the trelon trees, some which are over 40 years old, for a bike path is a backward approach. These matured trees help filter the air, manage stormwater, and provide vital habitat for wildlife. The removal will have lasting consequences on the air quality, noise pollution, safety, and the local ecosystem. We cannot afford to ignore the long-term harm this will cause. The proposed design also introduced real safety risks with 96 driveways, multiple gas stations, church exits, school exits, and major intersections. Turning on a side, turning a sidewalk into a bike lane will lead to accidents. Turning on a side, turning a sidewalk into a bike lane will lead to accidents. Have you ever watched a high school kid walking from home? Who will be held accountable if something goes wrong? These are important questions, okay? Traffic congestion is another concern. Bunce Road is already a heavily trafficked emergency route. Adding a bike lane and another traffic lane could lead to gridlock, making the road even more dangerous for everyone. We need a comprehensive plan to address this before moving forward. Maintenance is another issue. Who will be responsible for keeping the bike lanes clear of debris, leaves, and snow in the winter months? Our current resources are stretched thin, and there is no clear path for maintaining this infrastructure year-round. How will we fund this? The recent storm, storm, snowstorms have already highlighted the strain on our resources with snow plowing services less than frequent as needed. Homeowners already are deeply concerned. Will the build design be functional, aesthetically pleasing? What will happen to the driveways and access? Will the driveway aprons be reduced, compromising the safety and ease of entry? These questions must be addressed before proceeding. Who is legally responsible for pedestrian safety? In conclusion, I urge you to pause and reconsider this project. Let's take the time to develop a thoughtful, transparent plan that prioritizes safety, sustainability, and the true needs of our community. If you want a bike path, here's a safer solution, consider West 117 Riverside or Bell instead. These streets are safer and better suited for bike lanes for several reasons. They have high connectivity, the north-south routes linking Lakewood to Cleveland and nearby areas like Rocky River. A bike lane here would serve both local cyclists and regional commuters. And the adequate road width, the streets are wider, allowing for bike lanes without destructing traffic, and the economical, economic and recreational benefits. A bike lane here could support local businesses and provide more recreational opportunities, contributing to a long-term, citywide bike network.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the comments, and I know you all have, as was mentioned, I'm sure that you have other places you'd like to be, so we do appreciate how much it means, you know, how much you care in order to show up, as well as, clearly, this is a, this is a, something that you're passionate about, so we do take that under consideration. As I mentioned at the last meeting, there is nothing before council to vote on regarding this process. There's no legislative process, really, that does a pause or does any of these sorts of things. It's in motion, through planning commission, so, while I empathize with everything you have to say, there's really nothing before us on this. I don't know if anyone from the administration wants to make a comment, up to you, but, Mayor George.
Yeah, Council President, if I may, I, I do want to say I appreciate the resident feedback. We're always looking for, for feedback in any and of all our plans, and we did have an extensive public engagement process with residents receiving letters, yard signs placed, public meetings, multiple public meetings, and, you know, where we're at right now is the plans have been submitted, and we are, quite frankly, past the point of making any changes. So although I do appreciate all the, all the feedback, and we did modify the plan a bit based on the feedback, overwhelmingly, the feedback was supportive of the project, and again, it is, it is past the time for changes. So just want to make that comment.
Thank you, Mayor George. All right, all right, any further comments from colleagues? Uh, general announcements, unless there's, there are comments on this topic.
Yeah, I'll echo, I mean, thank you for the Bunce Road residents for coming. I, I do think that this project has received probably more outreach and public engagement than others, so I applaud the administration for doing that. And, you know, change is not easy, but I will say a project in the county that is similar to this is Garfield Park Boulevard in Garfield Heights is undergoing a little bit of a road dye and a shared use path that will connect Warner Road to Garfield Park Reservation, and it's a similar community in the sense there's a lot of curb cuts, a lot of driveways. So there are projects in the county that are similar to this. And then just as a general announcement, I know Claudia sent out that Jim Trelle passed away, the gentleman, well, a longtime Lakewood person, the mayor and I grew up with his kids. Wonderful family, so just, you know, want to recognize him, worked for the city for a long time, great guy. We all saw him when we came to council, so just wanted to say that.
Thank you, yes, definitely, that, I posted on the, on his sympathy page that, I don't think I ever saw him without a smile on his face, like, ever, and will definitely miss that smile coming into council meetings. Other announcements from council members? Announcements from the administration?
I'd just like to thank council, I would consider tonight like the end of my first budget period, and appreciate council's help, and all the directors, and it a pretty, pretty seamless process this year, so, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, and we appreciate you and your first year. All right, any further announcements? Hearing none, all right, with no further business to come before council, without objection, we adjourned.